I'd like to call the meeting of the February 3rd, 2021, Planning Commission for Hilton Head Island to order. And welcome everyone to the meeting and welcome any members of the general public who are listening in. Teresa, would you please call the roll? Oh, excuse me, Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA, first of all?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neill?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon? I think Mr. Scanlon may have dropped off, we'll circle back to him.
Okay.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Christian?
Here. And before-
Mr. Campbell, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Teresa, Mr. Campbell is excused, I understand.
Yes, sir.
All right, Michael, you're back on, we just wanted to make sure you were here. Can you hear us, Michael?
I couldn't hear anybody, but now I'm back on, okay.
Okay, great. Jennifer Ray is on the line, and I'm going to break for a moment to have Jennifer share with us some very untimely and sad news. Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Christian. It's with great sadness that I share with you today that our friend and colleague Scott Liggett, Director of Public Projects and Facilities here at the town, suffered a major medical emergency yesterday and will not recover. At this time, his family is preparing to donate his organs, which is what Scott, you know, was selfless and served everyone, and that's what he would have wanted. He's left a legacy here in our community that it will sorely be missed, plus his friendship. And at this time, I just ask you to join staff in keeping his family, Luanne and their children, in your prayers, and just give us time to, you know, process and grieve. So, thank you, Chairman, for giving staff an opportunity to share. I wish I had, you know, something better to come to you with today, but he was a friend to the Planning Commission, and it was important, you know, for you all to know, you know, from us, what's going on.
Thank you, Jennifer. You know, I know, I knew Scott for over 21 years, and he's a resident of Hilton Head Plantation, so he was also a constituent of mine, and knew him in many, many facets, and just a wonderful individual and public servant. And I share in the grief that his colleagues have for the loss, and anything that, you know, we can do for the family, you know, please don't hesitate to let us know. And it even makes it more difficult with this pandemic among us and all the other complications that arise from that. So, our serious sympathy and join with Jennifer, please keep Scott and his family in your thoughts and prayers as we move forward. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of the agenda. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Steve had his hand up, Alan seconded. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. All right, we have the minutes of the January 20th, 2021. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Levon and Leslie, I saw your hand pop up, Leslie seconded. And as Teresa calls to roll, if there are any suggested changes, please pipe up at that time. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. Teresa, appearance by citizens.
Yes, sir. Public comments concerning agenda items were submitted electronically via the open Town Hall portal. Those comments were provided to the commission for review and made part of the official record. In addition to commenting on the portal, citizens could call into the meeting to give public comments. However, we don't have any citizens on the call today.
All right, well, thank you, Teresa. All right, unfinished business. We sent a recommendation to the town on workforce housing. I understand that they have modified that recommendation, and I believe Jamie Lapko is on the line to tell us about the modifications that have been approved by the council. So, Jamie, floor is yours.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. As you recall, on January 6th, at your meeting, we did discuss amendments to the LMO related to workforce housing, creating a bonus density program that was scaled back from what you originally saw in the fall. And as it went forward, January 19th, it went to Town Council, and at their meeting, they voted to approve what you saw at that time, but they did want to add additional language, and that was relative to group living. And so, there's two changes that are coming back for your recommendation. And the first is, under the definition of group living, we added some specifics to cover dormitory style living, where there are shared communal facilities and multiple beds within a sleeping room. And then, there's a condition added under the workforce housing use that group living uses in the RM4 district are not eligible to participate in the workforce housing program. And this was included because Town Council did not want, they wanted to encourage the bonus density to be used for units rather than a dormitory style living. And dormitory style living is more conducive to a commercial conversion rather than new development, so they wanted to ensure new development was focused on creating full units versus a dormitory style living. So, that was done to just exclude group living from being able to participate in the bonus density at it. And those are the only two changes, and we were brought back to you because of the change from what you had originally seen, and so we need a recommendation from the Planning Commission to move it forward for second reading and adoption the next Town Council meeting.
Okay, so the Town Council, and the way this works is, if they modify it, it comes back to us, and then we have to either give a yea or nay. Either way, it will go back to the Town Council, is that correct, Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, let's do a first, a round of discussion to see if there are any questions for Jamie on the indications that she has brought forward from the Town Councils. So, Teresa, would you call the roll, and if you have a question for Jamie or a comment, please do so at that time.
Mr. Alfred?
No comments.
Mr. Theodore?
No comments.
Mr. Perry?
No comment.
Mr. Stevens?
I just want some clarification, if you could, Jamie, can you repeat the concern about the group living and how this works with workforce housing, if we're trying to accomplish providing some housing for people? I guess my question relates to the definition of group living and what the limitations are.
Group living is a specific use in the LMO, it's not a single family and it's not multifamily, so we still have condominiums and apartments, single family attached and detached. The dormitory style, the group living is more for a nursing home, if we had a hotel that would convert over to a dormitory style. That's more of what group living is. There's more of a, they share some sort of amenity or communal facilities, like a restroom or something like that, or a kitchen. And those are things that can be used for, if you're converting, and we have had that done for a hotel that wanted to convert over, they were able to utilize the group living to be able to put units in there. And that's what I've had in discussions with a couple of people who have called in. For the bonus density, that's really meant for more conducive to new development, and I don't think that Town Council wanted to encourage the development of a new dormitory to be built for workforce housing. We have the commercial conversion available for that, and as for this being the first step in the bonus density, I think we wanted to focus on getting some single family or multifamily out there to see if the program would be successful with that.
So, when we say group living, is there a specific number, or I mean, how does this work with roommates? Is it two people, is it four people, or is there a particular metric that's used?
No, sir, there is no, we don't determine occupancy of units.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. McGowan?
No questions, Jamie just described it very well, thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
No comments.
Mr. Scanlon?
Think it's a positive development what Town Council did.
Mr. Christian?
No comment. So, at this time, we need to make a recommendation back to the council, either for or against these particular, well, we have one vote in favor, although a canine vote, to move this back to the Town Council with our concurrence or our objection. So, the Chair will entertain a motion from among the Commissioners.
I'll say move.
Okay, you're moving to recommend approval of the changes.
That's right.
Okay, and I had multiple people put their hand up, I'm just gonna pick one. Alan, you look, I saw your hand go up first, so Alan seconded, so we have a motion on the floor to approve these changes that the council has requested and move them forward. So, Teresa, would you please call the roll, and Commissioners, give your yea or nay.
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. And Jamie, again, I want to thank you, and I know Jennifer worked on this project with you, and it was extremely comprehensive, and the council has chosen to take this, as well as to plan in smaller bites, but did not want to let the opportunity pass to thank you and Jennifer for all the time and effort you've put into this. And I'm sure that other pieces will be back on the table as we move forward with this entire initiative. So, thank you again, and thank you to Jennifer for your hard work on this. Okay, we're moving on to new business and our annual traffic report from our traffic person, Darren Shoemaker. So, Darren, you have the floor. And Darren need to unmute.
I apologize. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. It's my pleasure to present the 2020 Traffic Monitoring and Evaluation Report to you this morning. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation, which I will share. Let me begin my remarks by saying that obviously the global situation with the pandemic influenced our traffic demand numbers, particularly during the first half of 2020, and there was some debate as to the applicability of any numbers that we would collect this year, but we had a very strong rebound in traffic demand shortly before and during the Memorial Day holiday. For that reason, we did elect to go ahead and complete the June counts, as we normally do on a typical weekend, typical weekday, excuse me, during the month of June. We always eliminate Mondays and Fridays being adjacent to the weekend as a typical weekday. Those counts were made in June and used to prepare the report that is in your packet. The LMO contains requirements for the Traffic Monitoring and Evaluation Report, and they are five in number. The first requirement is a summary of morning and afternoon peak hour turning movement counts at each signalized intersection within the town. The second requirement is a summary of 24-hour demands on the town's major arterials. The third requirement is historical trends that enable comparisons over the past five years and five years previous to the report. The fourth requirement is that the counts and conditions at each intersection are used to conduct an analysis as outlined in the Transportation Research Board's Highway Capacity Manual, called out in the LMO as being the methodology that will be employed. The intersections are analyzed and compared with goals that are outlined in the LMO as well. And lastly, the report is required to include recommendations to mitigate any deficiencies relative to those goals that are identified as a result of the analyses. The 24-hour arterial counts were taken, as is typical, at strategic locations on our major arterials. Appendix B in your report is a map that shows graphically where the counts that are summarized in Table 1 of your report, and that I will, that we will review shortly. And this map shows the geographic locations of those counts. Appendix A of your report are graphical depictions of the morning and afternoon peak hour turning movement counts for each signalized intersection within the town, as well as Seapine Circle. The LMO requires that Seapine's circle also be counted and analyzed in accordance with the Highway Capacity Manual methodology in calendar years that are evenly divisible by five. Hence, that was done in 2020 and is summarized in your report. These graphical depictions of the counts in Appendix A are oriented so that for William Hilton Parkway, off-island is always to the right, and on-island is always to the left. That makes the diagrams geographically accurate on the south end, but on the north end of the island, it results in inversion of the diagrams with north actually being at the bottom. For the diagrams that show counts on Palmetto Bay Road and Pope Avenue, those facilities run roughly north-south. Off-island toward the Toll Bridge is shown to the north, and toward Caligny Beach is shown to the south. You'll note that the numbers for each turning movement are depicted as counted in June 2020 and are compared with the comparable figure that was collected in June 2019. A percentage difference from June 2019 is shown for those movements that exceed 50 motor vehicles per hour, and in the center of the intersection diagram is the total demand on the intersection for that morning or afternoon peak hour, again, compared with the previous year's count, and a change rounded to the nearest tenth of 1%. Lastly, you'll note that for each intersection approach, the number of pedestrian and bicycle crossings of that approach are shown on the diagram, and I'll simply point out that those numbers were limited to marked crosswalks within a couple of car lengths of the intersection itself, and I mention that because the locations where, at the entrances to many of our gated communities, the pathways kind of dodge back and are offset from William Hilton Parkway and cross the entrance to the gated community at a significant distance from the intersection, those demands are not captured nor summarized in the diagrams. The arterial counts are summarized in Table 1 on page 8 of your report, as well as the comparable figures for each of the previous five years. If you look at the total of all the 10 counts that are summarized at the bottom of Table 1, you'll note that we experienced volume peaks in 2015 and 2018, and rather significant decreases year to year, the past couple of years, in 2019 and 2020. Our volumes that we counted in June of 2020 were down nearly 5% from the comparable figures in June 2019, and the comparable, the figures in 2019 were down 2.5% from the previous year. So, in the last two years in total, from 2018 to 2020, we're down a little more than 7%. Those numbers we just reviewed, all the turning movement count numbers and the arterial numbers represent a snapshot that we are taking every June to capture what are roughly 85th percentile volumes, the 45th highest volume of the calendar year that is called out in the LMO as being the basis for design decisions to be made. And that is why we collect the counts in June, but we only count them for a few days in June. It's a snapshot that is somewhat susceptible to fluctuations and variability. The SC Department of Transportation also collects counts over the calendar year and annually releases their calendar year average demands for many locations on the island, much more than the 10 major arterial locations that we collect in June. And we receive those numbers annually. The most recent numbers that we have right now are for 2019. The 2020 numbers are typically not released until perhaps March or April by the Department of Transportation, so we don't have those numbers in, but we do have a wide variety of locations on the island, arterials and collector facilities, that we maintain a database of the SC Department of Transportation calendar year average numbers. So, those numbers are available to us and are also routinely employed to make design decisions, since they're a much broader measure of demand that takes into account demands throughout the calendar year and are somewhat less susceptible to fluctuations and variability. Table 2 on page 9 of your report shows the SC Department of Transportation calendar year average number crossing Jenkins Island, effectively demand entering and leaving the island, and calendar year average. You will see that unlike our June numbers, which are roughly equivalent to what we collected five years ago and are down over 7% in the last two years, demand, calendar year average demand, daily demand, entering and leaving the island via the bridges, has exhibited a steady increase. And if you look at the last five years, it has, the demands coming on and off the island on average have increased nearly 2% by 1.8% per year. The total intersection demands for the morning and afternoon peak hour that was shown in the center of the turning movement diagrams I showed you earlier are summarized in Table 3. You will see the total demand on the each signalized intersection and Seapine Circle for the morning peak hour and the afternoon peak hour, and a comparison with the comparable number for June 2019 and a percentage difference. You will note that despite the fact that our arterial demand counts were down 5% over the previous year, that that did not necessarily manifest itself during what we call rush hour, the morning and afternoon rush hour at our signals. We had a mix of decrease and increase in demands, and most notably, if you look at the right of the table, you'll see that on the south end of the island during the afternoon peak hour, many of those intersections were up a significant amount over the comparable demand that was counted in June 2019. And at Seapine Circle, due to the issues with operations that typically manifest themselves there during the midday or lunchtime peak hour, we do counts there, count that peak hour, and you'll see at the bottom of the table that that total and its comparable figure in, the last time that we counted Seapine Circle was actually two years ago in 2018 rather than 2019, but nonetheless, the change in demand from our previous count is shown and expressed as a percentage change as well. I'd also point out that at the bottom of the figure table, where you see totals, bold-faced, we have a couple of intersections on here that have just been signalized in the last year, and we eliminated those from the determination of the percentage change shown with the double asterisk and noted at the bottom to ensure a apples-to-apples comparison. There are some new features in the 2020 report that have not previously been included. Even though the turning movement diagrams in Appendix A do not depict U-turn movements at signalized intersection, at our signalized intersection counts, we merely combine the U-turns with the left turns for analysis purposes, in keeping with the methodology outlined in the Highway Capacity Manual, but we do have separate counts for left turns and U-turns at all of our signalized intersections, and the town has made some considerable efforts in recent years in the access management area, closing medians, implementing partial median closure, eliminating left turns, so forth. Of course, while that improves safety and operations, it can generate significant U-turn demands at our signalized intersections and locations that experience- And locations that experienced a significant U-turn demand are summarized in Table 4 on page 11 of your report. Furthermore, the commission has expressed an interest in the past of a more concentrated, improved focus on bicycle and pedestrian demands. As you have seen in the turning movement diagrams in Appendix A, all those crossing demands of each intersection, each leg at each intersection are summarized in those diagrams. And the total demand that we counted at all, the total crossing demand that we counted in June 2020 at all of our signalized intersections in aggregate was more than four times what we counted comparably five years ago in June 2015. So in riding around this past summer, we looked around and saw an awful lot of pedestrian and bicycle demands. Perhaps that demand was influenced by the conditions associated with the pandemic, more people outdoors enjoying themselves. But it was obvious that demands were way up this year, and we were really interested in seeing what those demands looked like, and we prepared a section on that in the report. Those demands are summarized in Table 5 on page 13 of the report. Despite the dramatic increase on demands at our signalized intersections, I'm pleased to report we have not had a serious injury result from a bicycle or pedestrian involved collision since very early in 2020, approximately a year ago. We experienced an unfortunate fatality on our pathway on Gumtree Road. But since then, even with the dramatically increased demand on our pathway system, we have been fortunate not to experience any comparable serious injury or fatal collisions involving bicycles or pedestrians on the town's major roadway network. The analyses that are conducted on the intersection, this is a graphic depiction of what a printout from one of those analyses looks like. The two goals outlined in the LMO are based on the average delay per vehicle in seconds at the intersection in the morning and afternoon peak hours, and another quantification called the intersection's volume-to-capacity ratio. The LMO indicates that to be in compliance during both the morning and afternoon peak hours, a intersection volume-to-capacity ratio of 0.9, 90% or less, must be satisfied, and a average delay per vehicle of 55 seconds or less must be realized. The software that is distributed by the Transportation Research Board is the Highway Capacity Manual Analysis Software. It only calculates and outputs one of those two quantities, and the other quantity, the intersection volume-to-capacity ratio, must be hand-calculated according to the process that is outlined in the manual. For many years now, I've had to write that in in the bottom margin of the analyses which are available for review in my office. This year, I made a point, since it is a rather complicated calculation, to show my work on the reverse of each calculation for subsequent review and vetting if anyone desires. The analysis results for the morning peak hour at all of our signalized intersections are summarized in Table 6 of your report. And I'm pleased to report that with both goals, the volume-to-capacity ratio and the delay per vehicle, everything was found to be in fully, in full compliance with the dual goals at each signalized intersection during the morning peak hour this year. You'll note that the results from one year ago, five years ago, and 10 years ago are also summarized in Table 6 and Table 7 in your report. Table 7 shows the analysis results for the afternoon peak hour with non-compliant intersections shown in bold. You will note that, as has been the case routinely in recent years, a single intersection failed to meet the goals in June of 2020 of this year, the intersection of William Hilton Parkway with Squire Pope Road and Chamberlain Drive. It failed to meet either of the dual goals outlined in the LMO based on a volume-to-capacity ratio exceeding 110%, 113% to be exact, and an average delay per vehicle of nearly 80 seconds per vehicle. As indicated earlier, we also counted Seepine Circle. The impact of U-turn movements on a roundabout like Seepine Circle is much more significant than at a signalized intersection, and our bike and ped demands there are typically negligible. Hence, we, the diagrams do not include any pedestrian or bicycle crossing demands for the various legs, but it does separate out U-turn movements from left turn movements. And this is what the analysis output looks like for a roundabout in the Highway Capacity Manual software. Each of the three peak hours, morning, midday, and afternoon, were all analyzed for Seepine Circle, and the results are summarized in Table 8 and Table 9 of your, in your report. Table 8 simply shows the hourly, the peak hour volume demand on Seepine Circle for June 2020, its previous count in June of 2018, and also five and 10 years ago in 2015 and 2010. You'll note that if you just look at the last five years, demand is slightly up, nearly 2% during the morning peak hour on Seepine Circle in June 2020, but it's actually down a couple of percent, 2% or 3% in the midday and afternoon peak hour, again, likely influenced by a general decrease in demands associated with the global situation and what we experienced during the first half of this year. As a result, as a partial result of some of those decreases in demands on Seepine Circle this year, the LMO, the LMO indicated goal for roundabouts such as Seepine Circle is that there is no average delay per vehicle exceeding 150 seconds, 2.5 minutes, on any of the individual approaches going into Seepine Circle. Table 9 shows the average delay per vehicle as output by the analysis results. You'll note that none of the approaches experienced an average delay per vehicle exceeding 150 seconds, and that the poorest performer was Greenwood Drive during the morning peak hour with an average delay per vehicle of over 98 seconds. The report also requires that discussions relative to the mitigation of any intersections found to be operating deficient with the goals be had within the report. That is included in your report, a discussion of the lone intersection that failed to meet the goals in June 2020, the intersection that you are seeing, William Hilton Parkway with Squire Pope Road and Chamberlain Drive. There is a discussion of the future, the present and future of this intersection in your report, particularly relative to the efforts of the South Carolina Department of Transportation in conjunction with the town and Beaufort County to improve the gateway corridor. SCDOT has proffered some suggested improvements or alternate improvements for this intersection as a part of their long-term project that are described in your report. And the first of the two recommendations is effectively widening. You'll note on here the provision of double right turns coming off of Squire Pope Road, albeit still yield-controlled at William Hilton Parkway, double left turns to serve the heavy left turn demand on the Squire Pope Road with two departure lanes to serve that. Of course, there are three lanes moving in each direction of William Hilton Parkway, but I'll bring your attention to a separate right turn lane outside of that widened footprint to serve right turns on the Squire Pope Road and a better-designed on-island right turn lane to serve right turns on to Chamberlain Drive. The second alternative that has been put forward by SCDOT, conversely to widening the intersection, while it still shows three through lanes in each direction, as well as right turn lane improvement, right turn lanes to serve arterial right turns onto the side street, you'll note that the on-island left turn lane is gone and is replaced by a median. The intent would be to prohibit that left turn movement and to redirect it further downstream. You'll note that the presence of two right turn lanes to serve the right turn from the side street onto off-island William Hilton Parkway is still there in the SCDOT's second alternative. This second alternative also includes a similar treatment at Spanish Wells Road, no left turn lanes on the arterials, left turns prohibited, but otherwise maintaining full movements from the side street. Frankly, staff has concerns with these suggested treatments for these intersections, feeling that if you leave the medians open to serve full movements from the side street, it may be rather difficult from a practical standpoint to prevent folks from trying to pull into those medians and make left turns off the arterial when it is physically possible to do so. Part of the SCDOT's second alternative includes a redirection of the left turn demands that currently take place to serve on-island traffic at both Squire Pope Road and Spanish Wells Road to a new signalized intersection midway in between the two at Old Wild Horse Road. You'll note the double left turns turning onto Old Wild Horse Road. There is an off-island left turn lane and a bulb out to accommodate U-turn movements for traffic flow in the off-island direction. And one, Old Wild Horse Road would actually be converted, at least for a portion of it, up until you get to the commercial areas served by Old Wild Horse Road. It would be converted to a one-way operation to serve that double left turn turning off of William Hilton Parkway. And, and the more northerly section of Old Wild Horse Road, between its intersection with Wild Horse Road and the commercial areas served, would remain open and available to two-way traffic. Frankly, staff has concerns with this alternative, feeling that directing all that traffic onto Old Wild Horse Road in lieu of Squire Pope Road and Wild Horse Road opposite Spanish Wells Road could, could very well generate the needs for, the need for improvements up to and including a roundabout at the Wild Horse, Old Wild Horse Road intersection to the north of here. The report includes a staff-developed alternative that we have been discussing internally. That alternative could be summarized as being the median is completely closed through the Squire Pope Road intersection, and the traffic signal is removed. Squire Pope Road would become simply a right-in, right-out movement, as would Chamberlain Drive to the south. There is a now-closed dirt road that runs through the woods here called Viola Road, or previously referred to as Viola Road. That connection would need to be reestablished to serve off-island left turns into this area that is served by Chamberlain Drive. And all this paved asphalt that could be converted to landscape median, a rather extensive area, but there is an area of existing landscape median that would need to be removed and made into a left turn lane to serve that road connection. Squire Pope Road being no longer available for ingress or egress left turns would become more of a local access road. And in order to avoid overburdening the already-challenged intersection of Gumtree Road with Wild Horse Road at the other end of Wild Horse Road, a new road connection could be constructed through this largely undeveloped area to connect Old Wild Horse Road and subsequently Wild Horse Road to Squire Pope Road, giving folks an opportunity to better utilize the signal at the existing signal, William Hilton Parkway, Spanish Wells Road, and Chamberlain Drive, and to improve access between the existing Squire Pope Road and that traffic signal. So that basically concludes my presentation. In summary, traffic demands counted in June 2020 were down a little more than 7% over what we counted two years ago in June 2018, which was a bit of a peak. 2018 was actually the second-highest demand that we had ever counted. Interestingly enough, 2005 remains the highest that we have ever counted. But we were down nearly 5% from last year, and in aggregate, a little more than 7% from two years ago with our June counts. The only intersection operating out of compliance with the LMO goals in June of 2020 was the intersection of William Hilton Parkway and Squire Pope Road, Chamberlain Drive during the afternoon peak hour. And Seepine Circle was found to be operating fully in compliance with the LMO goal in June of 2020. Pedestrian and bicycle demands saw very significant substantial increases in June of 2020, and are many times are actually more than four times the comparable numbers that we counted only five years ago. And your report includes a discussion on the future of the William Hilton Parkway-Squire Pope Road intersection relative to the SCDOT's long-term project and an alternate that has been developed and discussed among staff that we are currently in discussions with SCDOT on, and also intend to discuss with the existing oversight committee that is working with the independent engineer conducting a peer review of the SCDOT's work. Planning Commission action, LMO states that the Planning Commission will take certain actions in response to this presentation. It indicates that the commission will discuss the report and recommendations, hold a public meeting and elicit public comments, which you are doing now. It indicates that the report will be forwarded to Town Council. That is unnecessary as it has been transmitted in hard copy form to each council member and Mayor McCann as of earlier today. And most importantly and pointedly, the commission And most importantly and pointedly, the commission may prepare its own supplemental report and recommendations to accompany the traffic monitoring and evaluation report and forward that, put that in writing and, and, and put that, and forward that to Town Council if desired. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to entertain any comments or questions.
Okay, and what we will do, we will go through each of the commissioners and I'm sure that we, we all have questions for, for Darren. But Darren, before we go through, um, the toll on the Cross Island is going to be eliminated July 1st of this year. Has there any, have you done any analysis of the effect of traffic patterns that will occur, you know, Seapine Circle, other areas along that corridor? And also, we're going to do, we do traditionally do our traffic counts in June. That will come off in July, so we will be another year behind in getting some data on that effect. Any thought in just for Seapine Circle, maybe delaying that traffic count until the toll is lifted so we would not be, you know, a year, a year behind? And I just wanted to get your reaction so the commissioners could, could, you know, pose some questions if they have them about that particular item.
We anticipate that there will be a shift in demand from William Hilton Parkway on to the Cross Island Parkway. There, there will be a significant increase in demand on the Cross Island Parkway when the toll is removed. Currently, the traffic demand coming on the island divides roughly 70% to William Hilton Parkway, 30% to Cross Island Parkway. Frankly, that could change to 60-40 or even 55-45. We have not had any discussions regarding making any intersection counts or shifting our plan to conduct the counts in June of next year. But obviously, the removal of the toll will have, in our estimation, a significant impact on demands. Seapine Circle, we don't necessarily expect them to increase in aggregate significantly, but some of the turning movement demands will change significantly. And I think it would behoove us to, uh, to use our on-call count contractor next year to conduct some before and after counts, both on the toll bridge itself and, and at Seapine Circle.
Thank you, Darren. Okay, with that, Teresa, if you would call the roll and commissioners, please ask your questions and make your comments accordingly.
Mr. Theodore?
Well, just a few questions, Darren, and thank you for the, for the detailed analysis on that. A lot of information. Was the, the significant increase in Lagoon Road intersection, is that based on the convenience of the traffic light?
I, I would suggest yes. It is typical, traffic signals tend to act as a traffic magnet. We've all done it. We alter our route, perhaps select a more circuitous route to access the signal and make the movement that we desire to make a little bit safer and more conveniently. So it did experience a very significant increase in 2020 over 2019 that, that yes, that we attribute to the, uh, to the, um, the signalization of the intersection in the interim.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, do you expect, you know, as the park becomes more usable as the pandemic hopefully winds down, do you expect Nassau Street to become a higher-use intersection?
Uh, indeed. I, I think it, it, it already has with the improvements that the town has, has made on that intersection on, along Nassau Street. And certainly as we move into visitor season and warmer weather, we expect that the demands and utilization of that park is going to increase significantly. It's a wonderful amenity. We anticipate that a lot of people are going to discover it this spring, so to speak, and begin to use it more regularly. So yes, we are expecting that demands on the intersection of Pope Avenue and Nassau Street, that intersection to increase significantly.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, just from experience of watching turning movement as I'm driving down 278, there's a, an awful lot of on-island traffic turning on to Squire Pope Road, obviously going in the back way into Hilton Plantation and all that. With the town's preferred recommendation, do you see that blocking that island off as a long-term solution?
Yes, we do. We, we feel that currently the left turn demand from the on-island direction on to Wild Horse Road is not very, a very high-demand movement. It has additional capacity there. We certainly feel that particularly with the improvements that SCDOT is envisioning to the Spanish Wells Road intersection, that the existing left turn demand at Squire Pope Road can be relocated downstream and absorbed at the Wild Horse Road signal without resulting in any deficiencies relative to the town's operational goals or, or, or any, any significant capacity issues.
And the desire behind that is to simplify the, uh, the Squire Pope intersection so that you don't have all the lanes and everything?
Well, Squire Pope Road, you know, the on-island left turn demand you just cited is, is very heavy. The right turn demand from the side street is very heavy. And if we can serve those movements through alternate means, all the other turning movements at that intersection are fairly negligible and, and it gives us an opportunity to remove that traffic signal, something that I, we frequently is suggested to us that should be a goal, a, a long-term goal within the SCDOT's project.
But I guess the downside is it would more than likely the result would be higher-speed traffic through that area. Because of no interruption.
Well, to the, to the extent that the infrequent signal changes, uh, uh, result in speed reductions, then, then yes. But, uh, we feel that the issue of running speeds in that corridor needs to be a focus of the SCDOT's project and addressing that issue, calming traffic. And certainly during the peak hours when capacity is an issue, we often don't see the, the types of, we often don't see higher speeds in the quarter simply because of the congestion that is experienced with the relieved congestion that we are anticipating in the The issue of running speeds is, is certainly something that, uh, that we intend to address through, hopefully, an improved road design characteristics and, and also selective enforcement.
Okay, yeah, there's a lot of, you know, newcomers coming to the island trying to decide which lane they need, cross island versus 278. There's an awful lot of lane shifting that takes place in that area, that corridor. Is, is Chamberlain Road, is that ever intended to go anywhere or will that always be a dead end?
Um, not presently, but again, it is an ongoing discussion among staff, the pros and cons of, um, providing a connection between Spanish Wells Road and Chamberlain Drive, if you will, a complementary roadway connection to the one I, I displayed on the north side of the arterial, close to the end of my presentation. And, and, and the access management improvements that that, uh, that that opportunity affords. There are some developments on the southern side of the roadway there that currently have very difficult access in and out. And a roadway connection, while it would inevitably result in some undesirable impacts to the community, it would be a valuable connection as far as improving operations and safety along William Hilton Parkway, particularly for the folks that are currently forced to access that busy road from the southern side of the highway.
All right, that's it for my questions. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Uh, Mr. Christian and Mr. Theodore both addressed my questions.
Mr. Stevens?
Uh, yeah, Darren, thank you so much for your report. As always, so much detail. It's very interesting to see everything that's going on with our island and our community. Now, of course, the project that you keep referencing is in relation to what's happening with the corridor and the preparing of the bridges. Is that, that's correct, right?
Indeed.
And with SCDOT. Mr. Theodore answered or asked a lot of the questions that I have. I'm still not quite clear on some of the options you mentioned, especially when it comes to closing off that left turn at Squire Pope and 278. If residents in, on Squire Pope, they're right next to where 278 is, sounds like they would have to, if they're coming on to the island, they would have to go quite a ways around to come right back to that same area. You described the Wild Horse Road as an option. I'm sorry, my questions are kind of rambling and complex, so maybe you can help me get some clarification on. It seems that that would certainly increase the, the load on the, the Wild Horse Road area, which would increase the load, I'm sorry, on the Old Wild Horse Road, which would feed back into the Wild Horse Road, trying to get back around to Squire Pope Road. How is people to get that access back to Squire Pope if that left turn lane is closed off at 278?
The on-island motorists would face a more circuitous route. They'd have to go down and turn left at the Spanish Wells Road signal. I will point out that left turn can be made more safely at that location due to the design of the traffic signal that operates, that serves that left turn with a protected-only signal. You have a green arrow, a yellow arrow when you don't, you have a red arrow. There is no turning across through gaps in traffic in the off-island stream. So that would be a safety improvement after making that left turn. You'd go up a short, very short distance to the existing Old Wild Horse Road intersection, make a left turn and, and use a new facility to get back over to Squire Pope Road. And, um, and, and perhaps Old Wild Horse Road as it exists could be relocated into that new facility as a side street, thereby, uh, again, making, improving safety in that Old Wild Horse Road corridor and, uh, and emphasizing the, the new roadway connection that folks could use to connect between Wild Horse Road and Squire Pope Road, obtaining better access to the traffic signal.
And that, that road that you're speaking of possibly was between Wild Horse Road and Squire Pope Road, I believe you said it would go across some land or property there that is undeveloped at this time?
I showed, showed a, a potential alignment. No study has been made of that alignment based on environmental assessment. It could change significantly, but the alignment that I displayed on the screen during my presentation appeared to be the, the alignment that was of the lowest impact and frankly, avoided residential properties to a large extent. The biggest exception was right up against Squire Pope Road. We had to go down a property line and go in between a couple of residences up there at the Squire Pope Road end, but the alignment does, uh, with one or two possible exceptions, miss the, uh, avoid impacts to the residences that are currently served by Old Wild Horse Road.
Yeah, that was part of my question, and how would that impact the, the residents in that area and of course, the environmental impact? From what I know about that area, there seems to be a lot of wooded and marsh property in that area.
Yes, uh, there, there is, but, um, the, uh, the, uh, the, the alignment that was shown during the presentation as proposed stays to the south of the right-of-way or easement that is associated with that high-voltage transmission line. That presents another possible alignment. If we could work with the affected utility companies to develop an alignment along there, that is another distinct possibility. However, that power line does span a much greater section of wetlands and marsh than does the, the other alignment that I showed that pretty much stays on high ground to the south of the power line and the marsh.
Yeah. Okay, I have some concerns about that and I understand the challenge of trying to deal with the Squire Pope and 278 interchange there. I have the same question and concerns about the other side of that. You said something about Chamberlain Drive, and I believe Mr. Theodore asked you about that. You had mentioned that it was a possibility of Chamberlain Drive connecting back to another side road there?
Uh, Spanish Wells Road via the existing Humane Way.
Okay. And there's some marshlands back there as well, but that also comes past some of the residents in that, in that area as well?
There are some residences that are currently served by Darling Road that are perhaps the, um, the most, that, that would result in, in the largest impact in that area developing an alignment. Beyond that, an alignment could be developed using town land and available land without introducing significant impacts, but there are still some residences served by Darling Road that lie atop that alignment. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, um, thank you. And also, are there any plans or any thoughts about, about addressing the issues in the Burke's Beach area? There are some concerns about the safety of the residents in that area when it comes to crosswalks and people who are traveling at whatever rate of speed they're traveling there to, to the beaches and up and down 278 between Matthews Drive and Shelter Cove. Has there been any thought given to addressing those issues in that area?
Um, well, you are aware that the town recently, actually early in 2019, accomplished a safety improvement project at all of our unsignalized existing controlled crosswalks across William Hilton Parkway, including those in the Chaplain area. Beyond that, the future signalization of the intersection of William Hilton Parkway with Burke's Beach Road in a manner that included a signalized pedestrian crossing is certainly something that could be considered if found warranted based on the continuing development that is occurring in the Burke's Beach area.
Uh, thank you. And I mentioned that also because of the work that we're doing with our Gulliguchi Task Force that might increase some opportunities there for some of the residents and with the expected increase in development opportunities with that, that area already being heavily congested or the intensity there with folks going to the beaches, that may be something that we seriously want to consider in the future. seriously want to consider in the future. And all of my questions and comments and observations are of grave concern, and I know it's a tough job balancing the movement of traffic and getting people on the island and getting them certainly up and down Squire Pope. I actually live in Squire's Gate, which is going toward that down Squire Pope Road, and a lot of Hilton Head, Hilton Head Plantation residents use that. So I'm very concerned about the impact of that traffic will have, even with some of the alternatives that you have suggested. And already, also along with the SCDOT project in that corridor, how that's really going to affect the residents in that area and, I guess, the overall impact that it will have on our community really as a whole. But that whole area sounds like it may be in for some major, major transformations. I have some very serious safety concerns about folks in that area up and down 278 as it relates to crosswalks. I know that in previous discussions with other groups who are working in concert with the SCDOT about bike paths and things like that to increase the aesthetics, but my comments and my observations are also in concern with the residents who live there and the safety of how that traffic is flowing through those areas.
I think key to the success of the long-term 278 corridor project is going to be an effort to change the character of the roadway in the community area, in the stony community, and to introduce road design features and landscaping that naturally tend to calm traffic and support the area, the future land use of the area that is identified via the town's current efforts. And that includes pedestrian and bicycle facilities as a design tool to change the character of that traffic flow. And, and another matter is enforcement. The, currently, the congestion and design of that roadway right now doesn't lend itself very well to safe and convenient enforcement. And I think that that also needs to be taken into consideration within the project, and as the design of the future roadway is developed, those needs need to be taken into account and that we need to have a finished product that better facilitates enforcement of the regulatory speed limit in the community than the existing design of the roadway does today, which just doesn't, doesn't facilitate safe and convenient enforcement because, frankly, attempting to enforce the speed limit often with the current roadway design, it creates more of a safety issue than it addresses.
And that is also a concern for our neighbors there in the Windmill Harbor area as well. The groups that you spoke of earlier with the town and the folks that are involved with the SCDOT project, are you working pretty closely or are you aware of how much input we are getting from the residents in that area?
Well, there are, there are representatives of the community, as you're likely aware, serving on the Oversight Committee that is working with the independent consultant. So yes, the answer is that the community concerns are being conveyed and will continue to be conveyed and a topic of discussion within the meetings of that group.
Well, thank you, Darren. Like I said, I know this is challenging work, and you mentioned that really the only intersection that we have that is not functioning correctly right now is that Squire Pope Road and 278. And there's a lot of concern about what's going to happen there. Trying to balance that with the flow of traffic for folks who are coming onto the island, trying to get to other places on the island at the same time protecting the safety and the character of that stony community, I think is very, very important. Thank you for your work.
Agreed. Thank you.
Ms. McGowan?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Mr. O'Neil?
Mark, unmute yourself.
Geez, I'm gonna learn that someday. Darren, I think it's just an excellent report. Data is in there, and if you want to find it, you can figure out the problems that you still have and face every day. Two questions, really. One is, in terms of that connector, that goes through undeveloped land, the proposed or the thought-of connector, does that go through undeveloped land totally? And who owns it?
I can't necessarily address ownership. It's multiple parties own the land. It does largely pass through undeveloped areas, and it largely avoids impacts to the residential areas served by old Wild Horse Road. There, we did have to connect it to Squire Pope Road in between a couple residences, as shown on that screen, but that's just a, just an idea at this point, just a potential alignment that could change.
Okay, so when, when those ideas come forward, we get another crack at them through the whole process, right?
Oh, definitely.
In terms of commenting and things. So we're aware of it now, and then when it gets more specific, we'd hear more about it. The second thing is just more a generic question. It goes all the way back to your introduction. Just how much do we need to discount this report because of the COVID situation and the changes of traffic, especially last May, June, July?
Well, you know, between, between mid-March and the end, and mid-May, between mid-March and mid-May, our traffic demand numbers were down close to 40% at its nadir. And as I indicated earlier, we did have a very strong rebound in demands in the days leading up to the Memorial Day holiday, and we had a very busy Memorial Day holiday weekend. Demands stayed strong during the first part of June and after the holiday weekend. And I would suggest to you that they rebounded to within effectively pre-pandemic numbers by mid-June. And I think that that is reflected in the data that we possess and that is in your report regarding the total aggregate demand on the roadway network in general. Of course, when we take our June snapshot and focus in on the morning and afternoon peak volume hours, we were down nearly 5% from the previous year. As we're aware, a large portion of the demand that occurs during those peak volume hours is associated with folks commuting rather than our visitors, who often tend to avoid the peak volume hours. So I'd suggest to you that when we, when we collected the counts in June, we had effectively rebounded to pre-pandemic demands, generally speaking, but nonetheless, we were still down a few percent with our 24-hour numbers on the major arterials and focusing in on the, the peak hours and the signalized intersection counts. You know, the, the, the impact was felt most, most directly within the decrease in demands associated with commuters and the workforce.
Thank you. The only other comment I'd have then is this data over time is suggesting kind of a leveling off, or at least not, not as much of a growth pattern as we might have had earlier. And I recall when we had the presentation on the, the new bridges, that there were predictions in there of 25, 30, 35% increase in traffic coming on the, onto the island. And I think at some point, that needs to be reconciled for, for long-term planning purposes because we don't, those numbers were scary to me, but they were just predictions and they were in the future, but it's something to keep in mind.
I can tell you that, that as indicated in the report, that for the past five years, based on the SCDOT calendar year average numbers of folks crossing Jenkins Island, that we've been up about 1.8% per year on average for the last five years. And if you expand that view a bit and look at the last decade, the last 10 years, we have seen a very consistent annual rate of growth, people coming onto and off of the island, of very close to 1.5%. Now, is that going to maintain itself in the future? As we know, economic conditions, nobody can predict the future relative to the, the economy. That is a very, that's a primary driver as to the amount of traffic and, and, and long-term trends, what we will see. It would not surprise me if it, if it, if there is not a leveling out of, you know, a bit of a leveling out as we move forward. I believe that we will continue to see increases on a year-over-year basis, but when you look at the last 10 years, we've had relatively consistent economic conditions during that decade and been very consistent at, and increasing very close to 1.5% each year as far as that demand goes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Scanlon?
Darren, thank you for your, as always, detailed report. With regard to the alternatives at Squire Pope intersection, if they, if the powers that be were to go with alternative A, the double left-turn lane oncoming, how long a life would, would a structure like that maybe last with the future growth that people are predicting? In other words, if we're gonna do that double left-turn lane into Squire Pope, is that something that will be good for five, 10, or even more years, do you think?
Yes, I do think it would be, it would provide safe and efficient operations for even a longer tier, term period than that, two or three decades minimum, of course. Beyond that, it's hard to, it's hard to foresee the impacts that, that, that other factors could have on traffic demands, but yeah, the double left-turn lane would provide adequate capacity for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, fair enough.
I'm more concerned about the, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, I just don't see where all, the other alternatives, back where I come from, there's an expression, I'll clean it up, but basically you're going around your butt to get to your elbow in order to get back to Wild Horse if we don't go with the two turn lanes.
I have a greater concern about the double right-turn lanes shown on Squire Pope Road. Honestly, those are still served by a yield sign, and my experience with side-by-side right-turn lanes like that has not been great, and I would definitely prefer to see a free-flowing right and an adequately designed acceleration lane.
Fair enough. Well, one point of information, 278 Business is a state route, is that correct? And they maintain it?
Yes, sir.
I've noticed in driving on the William Hilton Parkway that there is now developed potholes and cracks all down one of the tire lanes there. When is the next scheduled resurfacing of 278 Business?
You know, I can tell you that happily Seapine Circle is about ready to be resurfaced by the state because it's been identified based on the pavement condition. We remain in, in, in ongoing contact and coordination with SCDOT on the pavement condition on William Hilton Parkway and routinely request specific maintenance actions. But, you know, that road was last resurfaced around 2010. It'll be largely up to the state as far as to schedule for future resurfacing. I don't have any information at this point. I would suggest to you that based on the condition of the road, we could likely foresee the state resurfacing at least segments of the road based on their assessment and condition within the next five to 10 years.
That seems, it's gonna be in bad shape by the, thank you for the information.
Sir Alfred?
Well, Darren, thank you for a very thorough and detailed written report, along with very good oral responses. Very much appreciated. The basic report deals with traffic flow through the community. As a policy matter, to me, it seems that equally important is safety, and that brings to mind the recording of crash statistics, which I know you do for bikes and autos, but are there any such statistics for automobile crashes?
Indeed, we have a very thorough, complete, informative, detailed database that we maintain on an ongoing basis of collision records, all reported collisions throughout the island, so that when a particular issue is brought to our attention, hey, is that a safety issue? Is it not? Are we having accidents there? We can answer that question. We don't just, we do keep bicycle-involved collisions separately and compile statistic on those, but we have a very strong database for collisions island-wide, which we routinely use to ensure that we are directing our resources most effectively in, in the manner of improving safety. And we have, just in the past few years, we have migrated from a hard copy file cabinet database in that regard to an electronic database that improves our capabilities as far as management, providing queries. We want to know how many pedestrian-involved collisions that there's been on a certain roadway over the last five years. We can now determine that electronically.
Thank you. From my personal perspective, I would think that when this type of report goes to the town council, that safety would be a matter of equal importance, so that when council considers what steps should be taken with regard to intersections, they would also be considering whether there are collision or safety aspects that would impact that, and I would like to suggest that we consider raising that in our report to council.
Well, the LMO goals are indeed operational-oriented rather than safety-oriented, but I think we can all agree that safety is always the top priority.
Yeah, I understand you're working off the LMO, and what I'm suggesting is maybe council needs to give at least some thought to whether there should be an expansion of what they consider when they're looking at our roadways. Another matter, Seapine Circle. Your statistics for a two-and-a-half-minute delay indicate that the circle is in compliance. At the same time, citizens, particularly those leaving Seapines on Greenwood, certainly during tourist season, are going to run into delays that are substantially in excess of two-and-a-half minutes, three-and-a-half minutes, four minutes, and that could happen almost every day in certain parts of the year. So my, my question, I suppose, is, is how do we talk to the people who are experiencing these three-and-a-half, four-minute delays at the circle to deal with the report that the circle is in compliance? You know, what can we tell them when they're saying, well, you know, look how long I can we tell them when they're saying, well, you know, look how long I had a wait to get through the circle?
Well, the reports that are summarized in Table 9, the, the analysis results for Seepine Circle, that are summarized in Table 9, they are the result of an analysis methodology. And quite frankly, the methodology for roundabouts may not be the most, may not accurately, may not reflect conditions at a large rotary, like Seepine Circle that serves as the hub of a number of major arterials as accurately as we would like. For that reason, in the past, we have gone out, and at the same time that we collected the counts for Seepine Circle, we've actually gone out and taken field measurements of the average delay that was being experienced by motorists in real-time at the circle from each of the four approaches. And we have routinely found that in, in certain instances, that we do have delays exceeding two-and-a-half minutes. What we've generally found is that the periods of time when those longer delays occur are relatively isolated, rather than being pervasive throughout the peak hour. You can encounter radically different conditions, one minute, and then you come back 15 minutes later, and, you know, things are a lot different. The average delay figures that we have field measured, while in some instances have also exceeded two-and-a-half minutes, they haven't, the, the, the amount that they have exceeded the goal, it's, we've been close. We don't go out and typically conduct field measurements that result in average delays of, say, greater than three minutes in entering the circle. And that's true, that's true even on Greenwood Drive, when it, when it backs up beyond Office Park Road.
Yeah.
Still, traffic seems to move fairly efficiently, and, and we don't generally measure delays exceeding three minutes. There are always outlying, isolated instances, but it, it doesn't occur routinely.
There are, there are rumors that there may be outside engineering studies of traffic flow through Seepine Circle. Do you have any knowledge of, of what might be coming along?
No. I'm not aware of anything in that, in that respect.
One, one last matter, and you reported that during 2020, bicycle traffic increased roughly four times that for 2015. Are there any thoughts or ideas germinating as to steps that might be taken to recognize a significant increase in bicycle traffic?
Well, I think it, it, it is being recognized within our capital improvements program, and, and, and again, we, we recognize that we, the conditions that we, that we observed and recorded in June of this year, may not be typical conditions, and, and, and may have been influenced by the pandemic situation. But I, I, I think we all recognize that under any circumstances, our demands are increasing, increasing significantly, and that it is going to warrant future investment in that regard in the near future.
Thank you, Darren. I think the town is fortunate to have someone like you with your extraordinary background of knowledge and ability to address all these issues in a very productive way. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Teresa. And Darren, you know, repeating all the other accolades, you know, very, very well done. And I'm gonna start at the, the base of the bridge. There was a, a proposal by the county to put a, some type of a, a controlling device at Windmill Harbor intersection. That, for the foreseeable future, has been put off? Yes or no? And been folded into the overall project of the corridor improvement?
The latter. It is being, it does remain under consideration as, as a, a candidate alternative within SCDOT's effort at this time.
Okay. You know, hopefully, one that is not gonna take the place of what Squire Pope Road is already doing. I mean, it'd be kind of ridiculous to remove one traffic control, and then install another at the base of the bridge that is just gonna do exactly the same thing, in, in P traffic. And, you know, I just want to reiterate what several folks have said about the Squire Pope intersection, you know, eliminating that, that left-hand turning movement as you come on the island, onto Squire Pope Road, for all the residents who, who live in, in that area. And moving it over to the first opportunity would be Wild Horse Road. And you have the Parker's gas station there, which is the, folks will go across, who are coming on island, and they will go into Parker's. And generally, you know, I use that road every morning to go to work, and it sometimes backs traffic out into the, into the flow. And you also have, you know, tractor trailers that park on Wild Horse Road, because they can't get into Parker's to make deliveries. And would there be an improvement to that entire intersection, and it would, you know, include Parker's, to accommodate the increased left-hand turning movements onto Wild Horse Road, since you're taking away the opportunity at Squire Pope?
Well, I, I, I'm not aware of immediate opportunities to, to improve the access design, the existing access that serves that Parker's there. It is a very busy site, generates a tremendous amount of traffic, and yes, it does create some operational difficulties. Perhaps there are some opportunities to, to mitigate some of those as we move forward in this corridor project. But I think, I think it's, it's, it's pretty much a, a, a separate issue to be addressed beyond the substantive changes to the roadway network that, that we're discussing.
There was, you know, some, you know, talk, pie in the sky possibly, of making that into a, a, a graded intersection, a flyover from Wild Horse to Spanish Wells Road. Does that have any legs at all, in the overall scheme of things?
I believe that our consultant, working with the oversight committee, is, is examining that question in detail.
Okay, because that, that's one way to, you know, to alleviate that situation. And you know, obviously, it would involve, you know, a much larger improvement to that, that particular intersection.
Any change is always a collection of pros and cons, and
They're all trade-offs, Darren. You and I both.
Great separation concepts are, are, are very long on both pros and cons.
You know, I, I would, would suggest that when we finalize this and make a recommendation, that we suggest to the town council, and suggest to Darren, that in, in light of the removal of the toll, that not waiting to get data until next June, that we, you know, at, at least do a traffic count at the circle, and any other intersections that, that, that may be impacted by that toll removal in July. So we get a more accurate count this year, than having to wait an entire calendar year to get accurate, accurate, accurate data. You know, the, several folks have indicated, and yourself included Darren, about bicycle traffic, pedestrian traffic on the, on all the leisure paths in the town. And I experienced the same thing in, in Hilton Head Plantation, and had many people providing comments to me about folks not behaving themselves, and, but it was just far more crowded, because it was, for many, the only means of exercise, and getting out safely. And, you know, I think that will subside somewhat, but, you know, demand for, for leisure paths is very, very high, and it's, it's always been number one, when we've asked the residents in Hilton Head Plantation, what, what they cherish most. It always comes back as a number one, and I'm sure it does with our guests as well. You know, another wild card, we experienced a huge influx of new property owners on the island, overall. They figured out that in a bigger city, where they were paying far more in taxes, and I would, would, would venture to use the word, were subject to far more draconian restrictions as far as their, their travel, what they could do. And they decided to, that South Carolina, and particularly Hilton Head Island, is a beautiful place, and they could pay far less in taxes, and enjoy a wonderful lifestyle, and work from home. I don't know what type of an impact that's had on rental properties that may have been bought now by individual property owners, and that has now changed to a residence rather than a weekly rental. I don't know if that's, that's a huge impact, but it, you know, it's something obvious to consider as we look at overall, you know, traffic, you know, over the bridge. You know, unfortunately, many of the retailers are moving off the island, which makes a lot of us who live here use the bridge, because we want to go shopping. And those, those places are no longer here to, to, to shop, unfortunately. So, you know, we're kind of shooting ourselves in, in the foot in, in that regard. When we do the, the traffic counts, Darren, in June, what, is it multiple days that we do that, or is it a particular day of the week that we do that?
All of the intersection turning movement counts, and the count at Seepine Circle, were all counted on the same day. The arterial 24-hour counts that are summarized in Table 1, were counted on, our contract requires that that data be collected for a minimum of three days, and that it include at least one Tuesday, one Wednesday, and one Thursday. And we summarize the average demands in Table 1. So, the answer is, the, the turning movement counts were all collected in the same day, but the arterial counts were collected over multiple days.
What, what day of the week were the, was used for, for the intersections?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, alright. So, you know, we, we didn't obviously, you know, measure it on the busiest day of the year. You know, where it's, would be a Saturday, you know, sometime in June or July. And, and that's where, you know, Stephen was going, you know, where folks, you know, run into those, those difficulties. Obviously, as we move forward with this, we're going to be experiencing some, you know, some changes, and they're going to be inconvenient for some. And as many of you have indicated, it is, they are trade-offs. We all know that trying to get off the island and on the island in the mornings is very difficult, and on a Saturday during tourist season, I think we've all learned to work around the window of opportunity, when everyone is leaving and everyone is coming on. But once we make that, that decision, and whatever it is, and finalize, and, you know, we need to educate the public, Darren, you know, very, very hard, because unfortunately, folks don't pay attention sometimes, and, and until the road is blocked off, or the, the suggested improvement is made, they go, what happened? Why wasn't I made aware of this? And, you know, obviously, we need to go overboard in, in educating folks. Again, an outstanding job on the analysis, Darren. Everyone appreciates, and we, we are truly fortunate to have someone of your caliber on staff to provide this analysis and this background.
Mr. Chairman.
With that, would someone like to make a, a, a recommendation? This has already been forwarded to the town, but, you know, we've discussed many things, and do we want to add to that recommendation in, in any way that, that, that report that Darren has made? Michael, unmute yourself, Michael.
Alright. Mr. Chairman, I have to run a little bit to another meeting, but the, the one thing, I think if we're gonna forward this on to town council with any recommendation, I would like to submit that we talk about alternative A as perhaps a favored way to go on the Squire Pope intersection.
And, and when you're talking about alternative A, you're talking about additional turning, additional turning movements?
Yeah, two, two turn lanes left into Squire Pope, and two out, egress lanes on 278 outbound.
Okay. Levanna, show your hand, go up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we should also include some general comments, a, a reference to what Mr. Alfred, Mr. Alfred said about the safety, and maybe some stats that could be included in those reports. But I think we need to know where our problems are.
I certainly would be in favor of that. Leslie?
And in addition, Chairman mentioned taking traffic counts after the toll came down at an earlier date, rather than waiting. I think that should also be included in the recommendation.
Okay. Any other suggestions? Alan?
Yeah, I would just, to go off of Leslie, to make certain that that count at the circle is also done from 278 and Pembina Bay, because we need to see what's coming in from both sides to understand completely, you know, what that does to the circle.
Yep.
Teresa, were you able to, to capture those comments from the various commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Alright, could, I have a motion to forward all of those comments as part of Darren's report back to town council.
I would so move.
Okay, Michael, Stephen seconds. And Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. Thank you all for your very, very thoughtful questions and comments. And Darren, thank you again for an excellent presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have to depart at this time. I have to depart. I'm sorry.
Can you stay a little, one second, Michael?
Sure.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go real, real quick into my chairman's report, and just note that several of us are either up for reappointment, or we have termed out. And Mr. Stevens, myself, Mr. Theodore, have termed out, and we will be finishing our term on the commission at the end of June. Mr. Scanlon and Ms. McGowan can be reappointed. And I, I would suggest to them that they are excellent commissioners, excellent contributors, and I would urge them to seek reappointment to the planning commission. And that is my chairman's report. And Michael, you can sign off now.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Todd, anything? I don't believe you've, you've met, or?
Yeah, sadly, I was in correspondence with Scott, getting ready to coordinate a, a CIP meeting towards the end of February. While we were meeting, I received an email from Jeff Buckle, that he's gonna take over that role. And so I think we're gonna stay on track with, with that meeting. And Alan, I think that's, you're the only one that hasn't responded to, to the date. So, once we get your feedback, then we anticipate meeting at the end of the month.
Thank you, Todd. Alright, comp plan, I know that, that that work is completed. That's Michael's report. Golegiachi Task Force Gollaguchi Task Force, Levarn, I know that your committee met earlier this week.
Yes, and we are, with the Historic Overlay District, which is a very big topic in the community now, it rests with the Public Planning Committee. And we did have a good meeting on Monday, said we're looking forward to some of the work from that committee and with staff.
Thank you, Levarn. All right, Leslie, anything from LMO?
We still have our meeting upcoming on the 17th.
Thank you. Alan, anything on rules?
Yeah, nothing today.
Okay. Ann, you have a staff report for us? And Ann, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Just a note that you have a quarterly report in your packet materials. Also that at the meeting on the 17th, you do have one agenda item that's reviewing the LMO amendments related to the new firm maps. So that'll be an important meeting. And you should have received an email about a training on the 19th at 1:00 on resilience in vulnerable communities. One of our staff members, Dr. Charisse DeBose, will be presenting during that, that training on the Gollaguchi community. So I think that'll be very relevant and I encourage all of you to virtually attend that and that does count towards the three credit hours for continuing training that you're required to have for each year. That's it, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ann, very much. And those of you who attended the one on sustainable communities where they moved entire communities to a new location, that was quite, quite interesting. Levarn, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that last training. I know it was kind of a quick and short notice. Now, Mr. Chairman, are we required to take the, forward the continuing education certification if we're coming off in June?
I doubt they're going to slap you on the wrist for that, Levarn, but I'll defer to Ann on that one.
I mean, I'd love to...
Yes, unfortunately, the training is for this past July until this next coming June. And even if you're leaving, we still do ask that you complete your training so that we don't get in trouble with the state.
So you're on the hook, Levarn.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business to come before the commissioners? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you all for your thoughtful time and comments.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Alan, Levarn, we got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you.